Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Pearland City Council at our regular meeting for tonight, Monday, March the 20th, year 2016-17. If you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by Councilmember Gary Moore and our Police Chief Johnny Spears will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight. We ask you your wisdom in our decisions that we make tonight. We ask that you watch over everyone here and on their way home. We ask that you watch over our first responders, our men and women in military here at home and abroad. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I want to express my appreciation for all of you being here tonight. And as you know, we are a city that does the invocation before we do a meeting and we also do the pledge of the American and Texas flag, and which we are very proud of. And it's nice to see this many people in the audience. There have been times when there have been less, and depending on the circumstance, sometimes more. But thank all of you for being here. The sun is shining on you and all of us, and I think it's great. One of the things I'd like to do is, we don't have this opportunity very often. This is election year, and we do have candidates that are running for office. And this is the first time, the second time that this city has had an opportunity to add a council member to our staff, counter up here. And I began to look, and we're pretty well crowded right now. Somebody's going to lose their place at the table, who I think it probably will be our city manager down at the end. But that's delightful, and we're putting a new person, which would be Position Number Seven, on the council this year. We did put one on there last year, which was Councilmember Perez. And so we are equipping ourselves and preparing for future growth in the community since we're getting to be a big city now with 130,000 people inside of our city limits and growing each year. So we need to make sure that we have wider participation in our community. So thank all of you for being here for that. I would like to recognize candidates who are here tonight. And why don't we sort of do? Most of our city councils work in Houston and other areas, so sometimes, depending on the traffic jam on 288, Beltway 8, it takes a little while for some of us to get here. And before we go to that point, let the record reflect that Derek Reed will not be able to attend tonight, and sends his best regards, but he was unable to make it. So why don't we start with the new Position Seven? All candidates who are running for Position Number Seven, maybe you could stand and one at a time and introduce yourself and tell what position you're running for. And that would be, I think, at least, to let people see who you are. Are any of you here for Position Seven?
What do you want, candidate, Position Number Seven?
Would you?
I'm number three on ballot.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dania Cassin. I'm running for Position Seven. I'm number five on the ballot, and I am a Shadow Creek resident.
And we also have a Position Five, which is our esteemed City Councilmember Greg Hill, will be leaving us at the end of this in May, and will be running for a judge position in Brazoria County. But that Position Five, were there anybody from Position Five here? And then let's move up to Position... Oh, he's moving in. He's not standing up. And how about Position Three, which is... What's your leadoff?
Gary Moore, candidate for Position Three.
My name is J. Donnell Jones. I'm a recently retired, 24-year military officer. I'm running for Position Number Three also.
Great. And that leaves Position for Mayor, Position. Are there any other candidates here for Mayor? Thank you. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We really do appreciate it and appreciate your service on the job as Mayor. My name is Quentin Wilts, and I'm a tenured resident, a Pearland Certified Project Manager, and I am running for Mayor of Pearland.
And I am Tom Reed, and I am running. I'm building a city, and I'm not through yet. Did we miss anybody? A little too early for a judgeship there?
No, not at all.
Would you stand up and introduce yourself for that?
Yeah, I'm currently a candidate in Brazoria County for County Crawlard Number One. I'll be the only candidate to ever represent the city of Pearland for Brazoria County on the misdemeanor court side, so hope I get it. Looks good so far.
Are there any other candidates for office, election office, at this point? Great. And I hope all of you are supporters in some way. That's great. Wonderful. Thank all of you for being here. Let's go to work. If you have an agenda, I'll be following the agenda. And we just completed the roll call, and we're getting ready to do what is called Comments from the Citizens. And we have quite a few that we want to comment on. Tonight, we have sort of an unusual situation, that we have three joint public hearings with our Planning and Zoning Commission. We start off with our regular agenda, and because when we get to the end of our regular agenda, we have an executive session. That executive session is going to be rather extensive. So what I'll do, I'll go through our agenda for the regular meeting and recess before we get into our executive session, and then move into, because we need to start them at 6:30. So we're getting pretty tight on timeframe. And we'll get into a public hearing, and then when we finally get around to it, we'll come back to the exec session, when we've solved all of our other problems on our regular posting agenda. All of these have been posted. And I do have a number of these. These are in order in which I received them from City Secretary. And I look like I had one coming up as I speak. Let me tell you the procedure. Would you come to the podium? Give us your name and your address. Thank you. Your name and your address. And when you speak, try to focus about three minutes, since there's an extensive number of people need to speak. The thing that we're trying to do is to... This is not a posted item. If it's a posted item, then it would be handled a little bit differently. But this is one that's a last-minute item on the agenda, which the law requires. It has to be posted 72 hours in advance. And as a result, what we're trying to do is let you speak now on these, before we go into the process of the action items on agenda. And of course, in the joint public hearings, there are no action items at all. We listen and share ideas on that. So let me start off, and these are in the order I received them, and I put those others right at the back end. Ed Mears, leadoff banner. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, Ed Mears, 2827.
And if you could, because we have so many people, it soaks up the sound, maybe you focus a little bit toward the microphone a little bit.
Thank you. Ed Mears, 2827, Moss Lake Lane, Pearland, 77584. I'm a West Pearland resident, speaking tonight about the Blue Ridge landfill and the issues there, and what council actions can be taken. Mayor, Council, thank you for your service. I've been a resident for about two years now, and I've been reporting nuisance odors from landfill. And I think there's four things I'd like to ask the council to consider tonight in its meeting and its deliberations later on the agenda item. First, we need to pass a city resolution to petition TCEQ Executive Director to immediately suspend the BRL permit. Two, settlement agreement needs to be revised. The 2009 agreement needs to be revisited for our protection. Three, the city needs to recover lost property tax revenue from the damages that BRL, the Blue Ridge landfill, is causing to property values out there and decreasing tax revenue for the city. And number four, tonight's action is, we need to be very deliberate about what type of professional services and help we need in order to get these other three goals achieved. Number one, when the city passed a resolution in 2006 opposing the BRL permit expansion, the landfill would be about wrapping up where it is today. The city, at that time, specified seven reasons to do so, to oppose that permit, and that was Resolution R. 2006-209. And at the time, BRL had not been cited with any notices of enforcement, notices of violation, or any other violations by TCEQ. So at the time, no problems, yet there were seven enumerated issues that the city, our council, stood up and said no to that landfill being expanded. One was the negative impact of the 170-foot height, that's 170 feet above the current grade surface. Two is the concern of available technology to manage a waste landfill that size. Three, traffic impact on area roads from enlarged landfill facility. Number four, potential for odors that could impact the quality of life in the surrounding area. Number five, possible impact on property values. Number six, potential impact on groundwater in the area. And number seven, potential for health risks to residents in the area. Review of all TCEQ documents and documents available from Brazoria County Appraisal District indicate items two through seven have all now happened, have all manifested. It was wise of the city then to protest and contest with the 1,500 residents and groups that were against the expansion of that landfill at the time. However, in 2009, we reached the settlement agreement, and then subsequently, the Citizens Against Blue Ridge Landfill also then had to concede to the landfill, and then received its permit in 2010. Now, there are two NOEs that have been enforced, one for off-site odors and one for onsite failure by the landfill to properly do surface emissions. Allegedly, there may even be more issues that have developed, but haven't been reported by TCEQ. Those two reasons alone, the city has the right, because it is an affected party, just as I have petitioned the TCEQ Executive Director. The city needs to pass a resolution to petition TCEQ to suspend the permit. What that means is it goes through in Chapter 305.66, Permit Denial, Suspension, Revocation, that they have 30 days' notice to... Blue Ridge, there'll be a hearing, and then the permit will be withheld. A couple of reasons also to do that, to have it suspended, is because when TCEQ did their inspections last November and October and November, they discovered that the self-monitoring that Blue Ridge has been doing was not valid. They threw out the previous six quarters. That included the period in which they were renewed for their permit. Their five-year permit was renewed based upon false reporting. That right there, TCEQ should have taken its own action, but we have to petition TCEQ, and a city of 120,000-plus would have a greater way than just Ed Mears writing a petition to the city, I mean, to TCEQ requesting a petition. And so just as we did back when there wasn't any problems with TCEQ with Blue Ridge landfill in 2006. Today, we have problems, and we need to proceed. Okay, someone else can read these other statements.
Could you move to closure pretty fast? We've tried to limit this to about three minutes.
We need to revise the settlement agreement because of some of those issues we see. I'm not saying we need to close the landfill. I'm saying they need to suspend the permit because they've lost control of their operations over there. There's nothing that TCEQ has found that they are doing correctly in their reports. The city needs to recover its lost property tax revenue. I've presented that information to you before, Council, Mayor. And again, let's be deliberate tonight in our process here. This is a very big, very complex, very complicated issue, and appreciate your service and your dedication to help us out on the West Side.
Appreciate those comments. Thank you. Kami Brady, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us. My name is Kami Brady. I live at 13302 Jasmine Peak Court in Southlake, very close to Blue Ridge landfill. We've been smelling the odors for now coming up on three years. And as we got together to talk about what we were asking you to deliberate in your executive session and what our ask is, Ed summed up the four points. I support those four points of passing a city resolution to petition TCEQ's Executive Director to immediately suspend BRL's permit, revise the settlement agreement, as Ed went over, recover our lost property tax valuation, which only benefits the city. I am a resident that actually negotiated for lower property taxes last year, and I'll do it again this year, and be very, very deliberate in the selection process of who we choose in terms of environmental, legal counsel to represent us, the residents. As we were going through the settlement agreement and the different areas of the agreement, the different sections of the agreement, that the city actually has enforcement power, one of those areas is see groundwater, monitor wells, and reporting. And these are some questions that I want to state, because I want them on record. And they're questions that we don't have the answers to. So our little task force and the bigger task force, these are still outstanding questions regarding Blue Ridge's responsibility to those monitor wells and the groundwater, monitor wells, and reporting. So in the agreement, it states that Blue Ridge will add 10 monitor wells, and there's a diagram in the settlement agreement. I'm not going to go over that. And then also agrees to provide copies of groundwater monitoring reports to Pearland. Some of the questions that we have are, since that agreement was executed, did the city observe and verify the wells were installed per the agreement? Only six appear to have been installed per quarterly groundwater monitoring reports. If there are 10, we don't see them, and we haven't seen the groundwater monitoring reports to state that there are 10 per the agreement. Did the city allow fewer wells? If that happened, we'd like to know if so, how, and why. Has the city received BRL groundwater monitoring reports in accordance with the agreement? Who has reviewed these reports? So who in the city staff in all these years since that agreement was executed? Who's been monitoring and sort of being that check and balance on those reports that BRL actually owes us and owes you? Is the city concerned of the benzene detections reported from samples collected at monitoring well 13S during two events in 2015? Yet no monitoring data has been provided for that well in 2016. That's really concerning. Nickel was also detected at elevated levels from the same well. Is the city satisfied with the interpreted groundwater flow patterns illustrated in the reports? Are additional groundwater monitoring wells needed to ensure compliance monitoring to the east? This may be something that the council, the environmental council that you look at hiring, may give good guidance on, and may help in revising that settlement agreement. And then as we get to the reporting, has BRL had any corrective measure assessment or corrective action plan assessed? Has the city provided comment for these assessments or plans? That's a big outstanding question. Is the city concerned with the elevated concentrations of barium in groundwater samples collected from Blue Ridge landfill wells? So we've been talking a lot about the odor in the air and what we're smelling. We're also really concerned about groundwater, and that's sort of the other thing that's kind of boiling beneath the surface, no pun intended. Has the city commented on the corrective action assessment for elevated levels of benzene detected within the landfill boundary? So I know that's a lot of questions. We have them in the full packet that I'm sure all of you will receive, but that's something as you go in and you discuss who you'd like to hire to represent us as citizens, and also take a look back through what has the city done in terms of enforcing that settlement agreement and holding Blue Ridge landfill accountable to all of the things in that agreement relative to groundwater. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Greg Hurwitt? There he is. There he is. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, sir. Thank you. My name is Greg Hurwitt. I live at 13507 Silent Walk Drive in Pearland, which is in the In Shadow Creek Ranch on the Fort Bend side. My wife and I have been residents for four and a half years. I'd like to thank Mayor and the council for your service and for your attention to this issue. I'd like to bring up just a couple of quick points regarding the settlement agreement and ask what is being done to address those points. Specifically, the agreement states that Blue Ridge landfill will not increase the vertical height of the landfill above 60 feet above grade for the first 12 years after issuance of the amended permit, and then not increase the height of the landfill above 130 feet above grade for the first 20 years. So my question is, how has the city verified that Blue Ridge landfill is in compliance with this portion of the settlement agreement? The second topic is the topic of screening. The 2009 settlement agreement provides that Blue Ridge will agree to, that the existing screening will be maintained throughout the life of the landfill, and that upon issuance of the final amended permit, prior to the landfill height increasing beyond 130 feet above sea level, a grade break will be constructed and landscaping will be installed to further screen the landfill along the eastern slope of the landfill. So the question there again is, how has the city verified that Blue Ridge landfill is in compliance with this portion of the settlement agreement? I'd also like to state my support for all the points made by Mr. Mears and by Kami. And I'd like to conclude by asking the city to recognize that the settlement agreement really has no value to the residents unless the city acts to enforce it. So we appreciate your efforts and whatever we can do to continue to support you in helping us to make sure that we resolve this issue. Thank you very much.
Good. Appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. Tanya? There she is. Tanya Schreber. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Tanya Stivers, and I live at 2325 Lost Bridge Lane, Pearland, 77584. I'm a Shadow Creek resident, and I have been a sufferer of the odor for about four and a half years now. I'm actually here to talk more about knowledge sharing and the residents who unfortunately are not advised of the current situation, the current health risks, and the current threat to not only their property, but their quality of life. I feel, as I go through this information myself, the facts are clearly there. There have been exceeding violations by this landfill. I think that your selection in an attorney will actually be rather simple, because it is a succulent case that can be easily winnable, in my opinion. Where my concern is, is the city's responsibility to remember the more mature residents who this city was built, their backbone was built upon the city, and making sure that the information that we all have, that we are easily taking for granted, be distributed amongst the city. It is my true feeling that if the actual 120,000 to 130,000 residents that do live in Pearland were actually in knowledge of the current situation that's going on with Blue Ridge landfill, that this room would not only be at full capacity, but there would be a line of people also waiting with pink slips outside. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate your comments. All of you standing at the back, where I think there's some seats back over here, if you want to drift over there and kind of share some of those, and you're sure welcome to do that. And I think maybe enough for all of you, I'm not sure. We'll throw all the little guys out. Make room here. Okay, let's move in our selection here. Ed Rondo? Where is Ed Rondo?
Fernando.
Yeah. Galavies, yes, there you are. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I also, I'm Fernando Galavies. I live at 14006 Bright Glen Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I also want to state my support for my fellow neighbors, and I also have questions pertaining to the 2009 agreement, and if time permits, I'd like to share a personal story. So the first question I have is in regards to Section G of the agreement, Class 1 Waste Limitations and Monitoring. It states that Blue Ridge agrees to reduce the Class 1 Waste disposal area in acres by half, 50% reduction. And I think a question that needs to be answered is, has BRL reduced its planned area of Class 1 Waste as agreed? How has this been measured, and has the city proven that they're actually reducing this acreage? Continuing on, Section G. 2, they're supposed to maintain a log of operating records, which will include a table of each new Class 1 waste sale. Has the city reviewed this Class 1 Waste Area Logs and Survey according to the settlement agreement? Also, Section G. 2, Blue Ridge agrees to forego any use of alternative daily cover at Class 1 Waste Area. Instead, Blue Ridge will place a six-inch lift of soil cover over the Class 1 Waste working face at the end of each day. How has the city verified that BRL is in compliance with this requirement? And also, did the city file a complaint when TCEQ discovered in 2010 that they sought to use alternate cover? They wanted to use tarps instead of the soil cover. Okay. Section G. 3, in regards to the quarterly surface emissions monitoring, has the city of Pearland been on site to observe this monitoring? BRL is supposed to give 10 days' notice to the city so a representative could be there. And they were supposed to receive reports after each quarter. Did they observe the deficiencies observed by TCEQ investigation in October and November? And finally, G. 4, BRL agrees to use commercially reasonable efforts to deliver 100% of the landfill gas collected for an onsite or offsite beneficial use. And how and when has the city reviewed the gas collection at BRL? How often and how much captured landfill gas has been used for this beneficial use? And how was it used or disposed? A personal story I'd like to share. It's helped direct my career and life in general, and I'm sure Mayor Reed, you can relate to this. I started working at NASA JSC shortly after the return to flight after the Columbia accident. And being a student of my craft, I meticulously went through the investigation report. And basically, what happened, it was a piece of foam detached from the external tank and hit the leading edge of the shuttle wing, caused a plate-sized hole in the wing. And the engineers knew this. It was on video. They elevated it to the NASA managers, but because of the complacency and the politics occurring at that time, nothing was done. And the NASA managers were hoping that someone else would take that initiative and rattle that cage. And it was actually a direct quote I have here from the flight director. "If it has been damaged, it's probably better not to know. I think the crew would rather not know. Don't you think it would be better for them to have a happy, successful flight and die unexpectedly during entry than to stay on orbit knowing there was nothing to be done until the air ran out?" So I say this because as the shuttle came back in, there was a hole in the wing, and it basically melted from the inside out, and the NASA managers did nothing about it. And the lesson I learned from that is, those of us with the knowledge and ability to make a difference have a moral obligation to do so. There's no guarantee that anyone else will come along, and by the time that someone does, it may already be too late. I just want to finish with that.
Thank you for your comments. I spent 32 lovely years down there on all the manned flights, so that there was... One, it was a little worse when the material fell off from the external tank onto the tank, and that was the last, it was quite a bad thing. Plus the Challenger, of course. Back to citizen to be heard here. Those were concerns that we had back in those days, and so the concern changes, but we need to keep on top of them and make sure we fix them. Chandra Vamulia? Where's Chandra there? Chandra Vemula, where's Chandra there? There she is. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and the council. My name is Chandra Vemula, and I live in two-two-two-seven Long Cove Court, Pearland, Texas. It's in West Pearland, in the Shadow Creek Ranch area, and we also own a small business in the same area. Me and my wife have been living in the area for six years now, and I'm here today to talk about the nuisance orders that we have been facing. The biggest concern is that we are financially dependent on the, on the same area where, where the order is happening, and for us, the resolution of this particular issue is very important for us. So I actually ask you to support all the actions that my colleagues, Mr. Ed Mears and, and the others in the area have been requesting for, like, to pass a city resolution to petition TCEQ director to suspend the BRL permit and settlement agreement to be revised, and city to recover lost property tax revenue from Blue Ridge landfill damages to property valuations, and be deliberate in our city selection for an expert environmental legal counsel. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. Thank you. And Darnell Jones, where is Darnell? There, Darnell Jones, there, there he is. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
You look pretty spiffy tonight.
I am here tonight as a concerned citizen. Although I am running for city council, I'm here as a concerned citizen first, and mostly to be a voice for myself and for the residents of Shadow Creek and other areas that smell the BRL landfill. The first thing I'd like to, to do, Mayor, is ask a few questions with regard to why I believe that, that the findings from the investigation for the surface emissions monitoring findings were enough to warrant a, a rapid solution to maybe gathering a permit to, to stop the permit, to temporarily stop the permit for BRL. I wanted to find out, and, and this is something that, you know, according to the settlement agreement, it says how many city council members have taken the safety training and done the walkthrough inspections that the, that the, the settlement agreement said that you were able to do? Have any of you done those? The, I'll take the silence.
We can't converse during the conversation.
Okay. All right. Are the findings that, are the findings from the October and November TCQ investigation not enough for the city to take aggressive action to petition TCEQ for an immediate suspension of BRL's permit? And these are just questions I basically want you to, to think about or consider. When the findings from, from the SEM or surface emissions monitoring have shown that BRL had six quarters where they reported no exceedance, yet investigations showed very dangerous methane levels, even two-hundred times greater than those required by the settlement agreement, and even four-hundred times greater than their own methods, were, were those not, does that not bear enough weight upon the city's duty to protect both the public and the environment by asking for a, a stoppage of the permit or a suspension of the permit? I think these are all fair questions. When the landfill operations manager of the landfill admitted to TC investigators that high levels would always be observed if monitoring methods were done correctly, and over one hundred and twenty-nine investigative findings were, were in exceedance, does that not warrant a red flag from our elected leaders that pure negligence is likely? I mean, I, I will say, okay, so tonight, again, on behalf of this group, we're asking that the city pass a resolution to petition TCEQ executive director to immediately suspend a BRL permit, settlement agreement revised, we want the settlement agreement revised, we want the city to recover lost property tax revenue, and from BRL damages to property valuations, be deliberate in our, in our city selection for expert environmental legal counsel. When I am elected, I will make sure that those things are taken care of.
Good. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. And we have one other. Dahlia? Dahlia, there you are. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen. Thank you, everyone that's here. My name is Dahlia Kessip, and I'm from Shadow Creek Ranch. I live at one-two-three-zero-eight Signal Hill Court. So I'm running for Pearland position, Pearland City Council, position seven, and I am the only resident of Shadow Creek Ranch on that, on the position seven ballot. I would like to start off by informing you and asking you guys that, as a Shadow Creek resident and as a working woman, a meeting at five-thirty is not reflective of our working families. I left work early with lost wages to be able to make this meeting, but only because I'm an advocate, and this is what I want to do. But many families do not have that option as well to leave early and come to these kinds of meetings, which I'm sure a lot more people would have been here a little bit My hope is that if I get to join you guys on council, we can find more ways to meet the community where they are at and at a greater frequency, especially when it comes to issues like the landfill. I know that all present want to reach solutions, but we want, we must make sure these solutions have the whole of our environment and affected citizens in mind. Foul odor, odors from Blue Ridge landfill must be assessed as soon as possible because as a healthcare professional, this affects the health of our people, of our families, and of our children. Toxic, toxic levels have been detected in excess. I will be speaking about future solutions at future forums. If other residents share my concerns, let's work together and keep the process accountable. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. Thank you. That completes our portion of citizen to be heard, which is citizen comments. And one of the reasons we cannot discuss with you the items or respond is that it's not been posted item, and also normally under citizen to be heard comments, it's not one of the action items here, so we're not supposed to dialogue at this point. And even though we'd like to sometimes. So, so thank you very much for that. Let's move in our agenda to item number five on our agenda, which is consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda, which consists of items A through I?
Item I, Mayor.
Remove I?
Yes.
Any other? Okay. All right. And let me make a comment about the consent agenda about, back in nineteen eighty, about that nineteen eighty timeframe, we, we went through a process, like both cities, of taking not, generally non-controversial type items, and put them on a consent agenda, and that was passed by the citizens by about ninety-two percent. And it has helped us a lot, but instead of, I think it was about nineteen items under our consent agenda, so it would take a while to go through those each. And if, if the council has a problem with one of them, we can pull it off and handle it as a regular item. So we have items A through I with the exception of I, and I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he'll present this for our council consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action of approval of consent agenda items A through I, with the exception of I, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing done, we do have motion and second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Consent agenda A through I, with the exception of I, passes with five to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
That information in the record. Let's move down to item I, and would the city manager present this for our consideration?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. This item, I'll start off with, and I don't know if city attorney, Mr. Coker, wants to jump in after I provide the information, but we're seeking your approval of a, of a resolution which in effect directs staff to prepare service plans for the annexation of approximately two hundred and twelve acres of property in the city's ETJ, commonly known as the Massey Oaks property. This particular annexation, ultimate annexation, is being asked, requested by the owner itself. It's important to note that if this governing body chooses to move forward with the annexation, that there'll be two public hearings at a later time, which is tentatively scheduled for June before it would actually be acted upon. So with that information in the record, we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
You know, I had no, I had no further comments unless the council wanted it. We'd need a motion and a second.
Yeah, we'd ask, ask Councilmember Carbone if he would make a motion to encompass that request.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R-2017-58, so moved.
Second.
Motion second on the floor now. Are now in discussion?
Mayor, I'm going to be abstaining from this issue, both because there's still some negotiations with the Pearland ISD on what's going to happen with that land, and my family does own some land in that general area that could possibly be affected by development, so I'm just going to stay out of this entire process.
We do have a motion second on the floor, and any further discussion on this item for council? Okay. We do have a motion second. Is there further discussion? Okay, we have nothing. We have a motion second on the floor for resolution R-2017-58, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-seventeen-one-fifty-eight was approved with four to zero, with one abstention with Councilmember Ordno and Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Let's move now to new business, item number one. Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number CUP one-six-zero-zero-zero-one, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and second on the floor. We did receive a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission at their February the twenty-first meeting. This was discussed in, in detail, and, and the Planning Commission made an approval of the conditional use permit, and it did pass, a motion made, and it did pass by a vote of six to zero, and I'll enter this into the proceedings for tonight as we proceed into discussing this. Now, city manager, if you'll, give us some details and staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This is a request for a conditional use permit, a CUP, to allow the redevelopment of, of a vacant car wash that's located at the corner of FM five-eighteen and Dixie Farm Road. The structure's already there. What they're wanting to do is renovate that facility and basically allow that use to occur again. As you mentioned, Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this item on their February twentieth agenda, but they included in their recommendation conditions to the overall permit, or the CUP, and those conditions are that, let's see here, bear with me one second. Excuse me, they recommended approval of the permit for the following reasons, that it's compatible with the area, that the application is for an existing building that does not require any major upgrades, and that the applicant has already taken steps to install the enhanced landscaping to this, screen the auto wash. As I mentioned, the planning, as you mentioned, Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve that six to zero.
Okay. That information in the record. Does the council have any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone, do you have a question regarding that? We did have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Ordinance CUP sixteen-zero-zero-zero-one-five was approved five to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
That information in the record. Let's move to item number two on our agenda, which let Councilmember Ordno share this with us.
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number CUP seventeen-dash-zero-zero-zero-one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. In the same manner that the Planning and Zoning, as a result of their meetings, they consider this before it comes to us, and we have a public hearing, and then Planning and Zoning Commission makes a decision on the particular ordinance, issue, and then it comes to our, and winds up on our agenda here as, as an action item. And at their twenty-first February meeting, they also considered this particular item, and they had a couple of, a little different result of their decision. They did make a motion to pass by, by a motion of six to zero, but with the conditions that bars over or behind the windows should, would not be permitted, and neon and LED strip lighting around the doors or windows would be prohibited also. And so that, that part that does, it completes the decision-making they had for six to zero decision. And I'll ask the city manager if he'll, will I have the staff report for this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This is a request for a CUP located at seventy-one oh-nine West Broadway Street to allow for a liquor package store in the general business zoning district. The property is currently developed as a shopping center, and the proposed use will be located in an existing fifteen-hundred-square-foot suite within the center. In addition to the required GB zoning that is required for this area, it, this specific type of a, a permit is required, a CUP, to provide the liquor package store. It needs that additional CUP in order for that to occur. The staff does recommend approval of this particular CUP. The property is surrounded by commercially zoned properties, and it's not located near any residential zoned land. The location is not at an entrance to a neighborhood. The property use is retail or similar to the size and intensity to the surrounding retail and commercial use. The location is an established shopping center, and the applicant has not proposed any modifications. And as you mentioned, Mayor, there are some, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve it with those two conditions that you mentioned. We'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Good. Council have any question or comment on this item? Hearing done, we have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Ordinance number CUP seventeen-zero-zero-zero-one passed with the five-zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chamber.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to new business, item number three. Councilmember Hill, would you do the honor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number two-thousand-T-dash-twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. And we also received a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who at their February the twenty-first meeting also considered this particular item in detail. A motion was made and was seconded, and it did pass by a vote of six to zero, and I entered this into the proceedings tonight, too. And move at this point for staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Unified Development Code for the city of Pearland is a code that guides all development in the city, including land uses in the zoning categories, and as a response to change the needs of the community, the staff brings forth amendments to the Unified Development Code. And this set of amendments include two major changes. One was, and both include changes to the land use matrix. The first one was regarding auto accessories or parts, auto sales, and auto wash facilities. As you recall, the Unified Development Code was changed a few months back. That required conditional use permits for a lot of auto-related uses. However, since then, we discussed some planned developments in the city, and the council discussed the need to exclude less intense auto-related uses from a CUP requirement, meaning that these three uses would be permitted by right, like they were before the CUP requirement was imposed on them. So what this table does- So what this table does is goes back and makes sure that those three uses, the auto accessories and/or parts, that's retail only inside the building, auto part sales, again, inside the building, and auto wash only full service, would not require a conditional use permit in the zones that they were permitted in. The second set of amendments include the land uses that relate to extended stay motel, hotel, and similar. So what, I have the table in front of you, and the proposed change is shown in that matrix. So what the matrix does is it combines two different uses, extended stay hotel motel use and a regular hotel motel use. So this is the ultimate change. But if you break it down, the hotel and motel use shown on the screen above was, is permitted in a number of non-residential zones. What this amendment does is it actually adds the ability to include this use in S1 and S2 zones, which are the spectrum zones by a CUP. So that's the addition that has been made. Also, the change will allow this use to be located in the old town site mixed dual-use zoning district, again, by a conditional use permit. What it does is it does remove it from the M1 zone, which is one of the industrial zones in the City of Pearland, with the assumption that a hotel motel would not be appropriate next to industrial uses. And it also removes it from neighborhood services zone. Neighborhood service and office professionals are two zones in the city that are the least intense commercial zones and are considered appropriate next to single-family residential areas. So this change will remove that, remove the hotel motel use from an S or neighborhood services zone. The change to the extended stay or motel or hotel, what that does is, I can get my notes. Again, in S3 and S4 zones, these wouldn't be permitted. Now, S3 zoning district is also the spectrum zoning district along Clear Creek. And the spectrum zoning there encourages mix of uses with residential. So the thought is to, again, take extended stay motel use away from residential that may be permitted in our S3 districts. And S4 district is a more industrial uses as, and S4 zoning district is basically located in areas that is west of Kirby as the areas get more industrial. So again, and that use has, is not considered appropriate there. And the third place it does remove it is next to residential zones, which would be the office professional zone. So what, this combination summarizes the changes that I mentioned for those two separate uses. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you for your comments. I want to tell you how lucky, excuse me, how lucky we are to have a planning commission of seven members chosen from our citizens. And that's a tough job. And they make some, make some good quality decisions. And their decision continues the quality city that we have to make sure they're really a stand guard to make sure that they give City Council good quality decision-making results. And they do each time. And I just wanted to let you know that I compliment them very highly, and I hope that you get to know them better. And as we go through the process here, we have this, in the record here. Does the council have any question or comment on this particular issue with the report from the staff?
Yeah, I'll be voting against this. But on the record, I want to state I am glad that we're finally allowing a AutoZone or something like that that I view no differently than a CVS or any other retail store to be approved like that and not have to come to government and beg, can I build here? In a commercial zoned area. Yet at the same time, in the same motion, we're telling all hotels, basically, no matter where you are, no matter what the zoning is, this body and planning and zoning have to approve it. I'm just not that big government guy that thinks government needs to be telling people exactly where they can build within an area that we've already zoned and said it's going to be general business, general commercial. It's not that we don't have zoning. It's just, this is zoning. And then on top of that, we're going to have you come in for a CUP. So we can talk about what, the height of the bushes, the colors you're going to put in, and get down to really government planning a private building. And I just can't support that.
Okay, any other comment? Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I am, I agree with you on a lot of the points that you made with respect to the provisions of the CUP that get into items outside of the use. I think that's the reason that we put together the task force that's looking at the CUPs in a whole, what's appropriate and inappropriate to be included and what is supposed to be a conditional use permit, not a conditional site permit. So I think hopefully by the end, by the time that body, which me and Councilmember Carbone are a part of, by the time that body gets to the end and presents something, a recommendation, hopefully will alleviate that concern. As you're not, as a council member, you voice that regularly. But there are others who voice that concern quite often. I will disagree in that there are certain base zonings, and we have the CUP in there so that we don't get so restrictive with zoning that we create so many categories it's impossible to navigate. We've heard from a number of residents who say, yeah, I don't mind being next to an office building or I don't mind being next to an AutoZone, but I don't want to live next to a hotel. I don't want to have a transient population coming through next door to me on a regular basis. I think this tool allows us to give us more scrutiny over those uses and their proximity to residential. And I think it is a service to our citizens and not a detriment. You know, I don't disagree with you about the limitations of government. We should, we should always be concerned about how much government is appropriate. But as I said in the JPH, we need to prioritize the people who live here and not the people who don't.
And that's a good point. If we make a CUP truly just a conditional use, I might feel differently about it. But in the form and the way it functions currently, I just can't.
Any other, Carbone?
I was wondering, since, since there's essentially two items here, one to do with auto-related uses and one to do with hotels and motels, are we able to split these up and vote on these separately, or they have to be considered in one motion?
I believe we could. We could have an amended motion, and then we could reflect that through the second reading when it comes back for the second reading, however council adopts it tonight.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend this, to split into, or can you make a motion for me?
Recommended motion by council to take each of these items individually, one dealing with the extended stay motel and hotels, and then in addition to that, taking a separate action on the auto-related uses. And then that will come back in the second reading as one document. But we'll be voting on each item separately to figure out what goes into the, to the document.
So moved. Thank you.
Okay. We have amended motion, motion second. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Amended motion passed four to one with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. That information is in the record. Let us move into item number four. Excuse me, we have amended motion on the table. And that way it'd be the easiest to do it. So we'll just go ahead and do the amended motion. Okay. Is there any question or comment on amended motion? Hearing none. We do have amended motion on the table for consideration, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Secretary?
Just to clarify, this will be first for the auto-related uses?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion is approved to five to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay.
Mayor, just to clarify, if we can now vote on the extended stay slash hotel motel item?
Okay. Would you clarify that again?
We're now going to vote on the extended stay hotel and motel changes to the UDC?
Okay. Is there a motion for that? Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a second. We do have that on, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed three to two with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Mayor, just for clarification, when the ordinance comes back next time, it'll be modified according to the actions taken this evening.
Okay, good. For that, isn't it? Sometimes council actions take a little unwinding, and we just got through doing that. Since it is unwound, I'll move to item number four. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. This one will be a lot easier. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2017-46. Resolution, City Council, City Pearland, Texas, awarding a unit supply contract for pipes, fittings, and valves to Ferguson Enterprises, estimated amount of $916,549, so moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually the second of three items that relate to pipes, valves, and water fittings. There was one on the consent agenda that was previously approved, and then we have this one in the next item. What we did is we advertised for bid for a 38 different sections of items, if you will. And what we have here is a recommendation to award a group of those specifically to Ferguson Enterprises in the amount that Councilmember Perez mentioned, $916,548. In this particular item, 21 different sections are being recommended to this particular vendor. We are recommending approval, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
An eventual comment will wait be for the next two items. Okay, we have motion second on the floor. What, does the council have any questions on this?
I'd just like to thank staff for splitting this up. I think it's saving quite a bit. But I know it's a lot of extra work to parse out each item, but I appreciate that.
Okay, and
Yes, Mayor. So since this is somewhat related to my industry, Ferguson Water Works is not a supplier I'm real familiar with. Do we have any, staff, can you talk about any history we have with their products? Either here at the city, Eric, I know you've gotten some experience prior to here, here at City of Pearland, or any of your private experience?
Yes, sir. Ferguson was, was one of our suppliers a few years back. Then they had their contract managers change. They failed to bid the last time it came up. We did have three contracts before the last go-around. We had two, and now we're going back to three.
And are they, are they a manufacturer or just supplier?
They're a distributor.
Okay, so
As, as all three firms are.
Okay, so the fire hydrants will still be the Mueller fire hydrants that we call?
Yes, Mueller AD are the fire hydrants. It's the city's preferred equipment list.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment or question on this item? Chairman, we do have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-46 passed five to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item number five. Councilmember Carbone, back to your seat.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2017-47. Resolution awarding a unit supply contract for pipes, fittings, and valves to HD Supply Water Works, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think it's the discussion by staff. Do you have additional comments on this item?
The only thing I'd like to add, Mayor, is this, this is for 12 different sections of that total bid. So we are recommending approval. We're familiar with this company as Mr. Wilson indicated, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Council have any question or comment on that item at all? Hearing none. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-47 passed five to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving to item number seven and eight. We're going to combine these in one reading. Excuse me. There's a six in there. I'm sorry, these are crowded up close together. Yeah. Moore does.
Consideration possible action, resolution R 2017-52. Resolution awarding a bid for the construction of the West McCord Pedestrian Path Project, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any additional comments on this, staff report?
Yes, Mayor, this is a different item. This actually relates to the old MUD IV. And when they were in existence, they issued bonds for various improvements. And this is the remaining money that's left over from all of those projects. What we're recommending here is a installation of a sidewalk in several areas along West McCord Road. You may recall that part of the SPA agreement, the Strategic Partnership Agreement that we had with MUD IV was after annexation, we would create a liaison committee. And that liaison committee would actually come up with recommendations as to if there were any monies left over, how those monies would be spent. There's approximately $380,000 left over with all of the MUD projects, MUD IV projects. This is the project that the MUD IV committee, the liaison committee, recommended. It's an installation of 2,800 square foot of six-foot sidewalk along West McCord Road, plus an additional 3,600 square feet in some add alternates that we're recommending. The total project would add up to about $319,690.50. We're recommending approval of a contract to Tandem Services LLC. If you do the math on, based on what I just said, there is some additional monies left over for the project that we're going to ultimately use to do some project management on this project. But right now, we're just recommending award of this contract. And we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Well, I could comment. I get mixed up with pipe fittings a little bit sometimes, but that's okay. That's what we've got plumbers for. Any question or comment on that, council, at this point?
I've got a comment. Just, just to make it clear to all those out there and the 10 viewers that are watching on TV that I always mention, is that at first, this is, at first, the thought was from several, I know, that when Country Place Residence suggested this, this sidewalk, the thought was, well, why not take some of this money and use it somewhere else? But then clearly it became clear rather quickly that the law doesn't allow that. It's extra mud money or surplus from mud funds that have to be spent within, within this area for this, for this old mud and these residents. I think that these residents will be So I think that these residents will be pretty happy with this, just given that they had wanted, obviously, for us to spend the money on, I guess, seeding the golf course, which we can't do legally, I don't believe. And so, the compromise was that they have a sidewalk to use. So I think, obviously, that means we have to maintain the sidewalk, and that's always one of those issues that you don't look forward to doing. But several residents throughout the cities, throughout our city, have sidewalks, and I think this will be good for the Country Place residents. So just to make that clear, that we can't spend it elsewhere.
Sounds good. Any other comment from council?
Yes, Mayor, just one question, kind of an ask stare question, but bid tab shows four-inch concrete, but if I'm not mistaken, we're four and a half is our minimum thickness? We four-inch or four and a half? Okay. Thanks.
Any other comment? That'd be good comment. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-52 passed with five to zero, with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, would you present item seven and eight by reading caption in the city?
Did last time, as you know, with these two items, we have to read the entire caption. If you would like, I can read those as a recommended motion and then have council so moved. That way, it spares the council of having to read the entire two captions. Thank you.
Take it from there.
Item number seven, resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property, being a 0.30101 acre parcel of land situated in HTBRR Company Survey, abstract 234, Missouri County, Texas, being out of Lot 28, Section 9 of Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Company Subdivision, according to the map or plat thereof recorded under volume two, page 23 of the plat of records, Missouri County, Texas, said Lot 28 being called a 9.924 acre tract of land conveyed to Gartner interest, limited by deed filed under Clerk's File 00004926 of the official public records of Missouri County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements for the Max Road project on certain real property described herein. Authorizing city attorney or his designated or other city officials to take such actions are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. Also, item number eight, resolution R 2017-50, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property, being a 0.3403 of one acre parcel of land situated in HTBRR Company Survey, abstract 234, Missouri County, Texas, being out of the southern half of Lot 29, Section 9 of Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company Subdivision, according to the map or plat thereof recorded under volume two, page 23 of the plat records of Missouri County, Texas, said south half of Lot 29 being part of the residue of a called 4.9678 acre tract of land conveyed to Lloyd W. Young Senior and Mary S. Young, trustees of Lloyd W. Young Senior and Mary S. Young Revocable Trust, dated July 27, 2009, by deed filed under Clerk's File Number 2009038799 of the official public records of Missouri County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements for Max Road project on certain real property described herein, authorizing city attorney or his designated and other city officials to take such actions are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
It's not usual that we have to read the, all of the wording of the ordinances, but we have on this particular type where you're acquiring property with the potential of doing of doing the exercise of eminent domain, and we always try very hard to make sure that we have the to buy the property and everything else, but you do that as a last resort.
Second.
Mr. DeBoer, would you present those two items for us, for the motion?
I already did, Mayor.
We got it.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Okay, good. You moved and second for items 2017-49 and R 2017-50.
Okay.
We're now, staff report on any items on there that need clarifying at this point? We would do, sir.
Mayor, I was just going to clarify for the benefit of the public here this evening, because obviously, I just read a long caption. Some people may be wondering why, and you hear the term imminent domain. So if you don't mind, I'd like to just sort of explain. This particular project is the Max Road project. As the scope of that project goes from FM 518 to the Hughes Ranch Road, and this is a road project, which of course, will include water, sewer, drainage components to it. Most of the properties required for that expansion project have been acquired. There are some that were involved in negotiations, and you don't reach an agreement. And under Texas law, if you're going to do that, we have to provide compensation based on fair market value. So we've had an appraisal, we've been in negotiations, and sometimes, we just can't reach a settlement. And when that happens, we have to pass a resolution like this to authorize us to initiate a proceeding, which will allow us to continue that process at the courts. And actually, these two cases tonight, one of them is actually only, if you'll notice, it's only for $1,000 in value, because the property actually being acquired is in the middle of the roadway. It's a unique situation where the property owner actually owns to the center of the roadway, but that roadway is actually being used right now by the public and has been for years. So that has very little value to it. That individual is actually, it's very likely that particular case will settle before the city actually files anything, because the property owner simply asked us to possibly work with them on some median changes that would help address access to their property. And so we're working with them on that. This is being passed just in case that that doesn't come to fruition. But in all likelihood, we're anticipating that there's a good chance that case will be resolved. The other case is a case where the roadway will be very close, in very close proximity to a house. And these settlements that, when we're in settlement negotiations, they have to be approved by Texas Department of Transportation, because this is a Texas dot funded project. And in this particular case, the property owner believes there's much greater damages to the remainder, meaning not only what we're acquiring, but it's so close to their house, that the damages are greater. And there's a disagreement between Texas dot on that amount and then ultimately, the property owner. And so, that is why the case would end up proceeding to eminent domain. Likewise, in that case, we're actually optimistic that hopefully, some way, we can reach a settlement with respect to the Gulf, between whatever the appraisal is and what the property owner is seeking. But in order to maintain timelines and stick to meet Texas dot's timelines, we would have to have the resolutions approved, so we can at least initiate the proceedings in the event we can't reach a settlement. Sorry for that long.
Yeah, trying to exercise the power of eminent domain. We're trying to do that as an absolute last item. And it usually is for you, sometimes lead for maybe a strip of land along a roadway. We've got to build the road, but we're all concerned about our mobility issue. And both of these roads would be part of Max Road and also would tie into McCard Road. And those, we need those in place for, as we get the 288 toll road going, that's going to, we're going to have to have those in place. So a lot of these are small pieces of property running where the property does this way, and we want to make the road straight. And it's a last resort thing for us to do that. And usually, they sell the piece of property because it's wealth, no use anyway. Just another piece of property to mow. So it's something, so. So it works, it has worked for us very well, and we've been very careful in that process. So we have a description here of what we have. We have a, let's have a comments from the council at this point.
I just want to thank staff for their work on this. Having fortunately, actually unfortunately, gone through this process with the city on some drainage projects and Texas dot on some road projects, and having family land taken, I understand both sides of it, but I will say, staff has always been wonderful to work with in that process. And I thank y'all for the way you treat residents, because this isn't an easy situation.
I'd like to echo that. I've got a good friend of mine who was part of this annexation process. He called me pretty upset about the fact that it had to be acquired and some, he had some disagreements about the evaluation. I gave him some pointers as to what he could do and gave him some direction on where he should go. And he called me within a few weeks and said it was all resolved, and they felt happy about it. So it's rare that we see people turn around that much. I think that's a, that is wholly a comment, not to the council members here, but to the staff and what y'all do and what y'all put together. And the, these negotiations are never easy. You're asking people to sell something that generally, they don't want to sell. And they can be very difficult conversations, and I commend them work that y'all do.
Any other comment or question, council? Hearing done, we do have a motion and second on the floor for resolution 2017-52, 2017-50. Will be a consideration, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-49 and resolution 2017-50 is approved, five to zero, with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. We were, at this point, recess our agenda at five, at 6:58. Okay. And this has been very interesting and entertaining and very productive, having all of you here. We're going to take a short five-minute break for the guys who came in a little bit late from driving down. See you back in five minutes.
Before Martin gets started with the joint public hearing process, I would like to take a few minutes of your time to introduce our new city planner, if you're wondering who that is.
This is some instructions and procedure that we follow on this.
Just wanted to introduce Gemonte McBride, also called as Jay. She is our new city planner. She started last week. Jay has a lot of experience in planning. She has six years of local planning experience in the city of New Orleans and the city of Alexandria, also in Louisiana. Jay has also worked in Virginia. She was working in their regional government planning agency and has over six years of experience there. And as staff at the regional planning agency, Jay was, used to work with about seventeen other municipalities with their mayors, with their elected officials and staff, helping them with their planning needs. So we are really happy to have Jay here. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science from the Louisiana State University and a Master of Public Administration with a concentration in urban planning from Southern University. And please join me in welcoming Jay to the city of Pearland. Thank you.
I think that's great. Maybe staff could give us a little direction on the order in which we proceed and some of the instruction we need?
Yes, sir. All right, on tonight's agenda, we have three items. Two zone changes, and then there will be a workshop afterwards. The first is 324 Riley Road, and the second zone change is the southeast corner of Liberty Drive and Broadway Street. Each item has a public hearing conducted as follow. There will be a call to order, then staffers, staffs report, the applicant presentation, and then public comments in either support or opposition to either case. Please come forward to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record. Please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. And then make sure to complete a speaker's card and give it to the recording secretary on my left, followed by council, commission, and staff discussion, and then an adjournment to each hearing. After the joint public hearing, Planning and Zoning Commission will hold their regular meeting tonight, later on this evening, to vote on their recommendation. Speaking at the P&amp;Z meeting is at the P&amp;Z's discretion, and the first and second considerations for these two items, the two zone changes, will be April 10th and April 24th.
Okay. Let me add to that, if you, item number four on your agenda for public hearings, does permit, of course, to speak for or against a particular issue in question? And if you have a question that comes up, we're not able to dialogue with you because of the requirements of public hearings, and this is a legal process. If you do have a question, go ahead and raise it, and then one of the, either city council member or one of our planning commission members will present that in your behalf later. And that would be done under item number five, so. And the other thing I want to say is that there's not a decision-making process in this particular joint public hearing at this point. We want to make sure that the planning commission and city council hear the same story and hear it together, and that when the planning commission makes their decision, they will eventually forward that decision to the city council to be placed on a regular council agenda as an action item. So that gives us both hear the same story at the same time and make a more equitable and accurate decision. And when you do get up, be sure and give us your name and address. And would you've kind of moved to the microphone? We need to, at some point, if we do the city hall, a little better in the process of upgrading it. Might get the speaking system a little bit where everybody can hear. I know some of the people at the back row have always made the comment that it's kind of hard to hear sometimes because of the acoustics in here, and it was not designed for this many people at one time. So with that in place, let me move in our agenda to purpose the hearing, a legal reason for the hearing, and ask the chairman of the planning commission to present it for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. This is zone change application number zone 17-00001. This is a request of Myrna Fernandez of WGA, applicant on behalf of Martin Harrison, owner, for approval of a change in zoning from the Spectrum District, Sub District 5, S5, zoning to light industrial M1 zoning district on approximately 4.949 acres of land. The general location is 324 Riley Road, Pearland, Texas.
Okay, with that information at the record, let's move in our collective agendas to item number three, which is application information case summary. Item 3A is staff report.
All right, this is, of course, the zone change for 324 Riley Road. This red outline shows the particular parcel on the aerial map that we are interested in hearing about rezoning. This is the zoning map. As you can tell, it has S5 sub-district on the east and south side, and then light industrial M1 to the west and north. It's all within the lower Kirby Urban Center Future Land Use Plan map. This is a view from the property looking north. This is a view looking east. This is a view looking south. And then this is a view looking west. This request is for a change in zoning from S5 to M1. The property is currently vacant but developed with a warehouse structure. The Spectrum District is intended for diverse land uses, and the current S5 zoning is for a variety of light industrial-type developments. Applicant has purchased the property to the west. The site will incorporate both lots for their global crane sales, crane rental, and project services companies. Staff has received one comment sheet in favor and no phone calls regarding the proposed request. Staff recommends approval of the requested change in zoning from the S5 to M1 zoning classifications on the approximate 4.949 acre site for the following reasons. The proposed zoning of the M1 on the subject property is not in accordance with the future land use designation of the comprehensive plan. However, it is compatible with the existing development that has taken place on the site. The intensity and scale of the proposed project is The intensity and scale of the proposed project is not compatible with the desired character of the Spectrum District and recent developments in the area along Kirby Drive. However, this parcel and the adjoining parcels owned M1 under the same ownership are located on the western boundary of the S5 district and will be similar in nature to the adjoining industrial areas located west of Almeida School Road. Rezoning the subject property would create a cohesive development under a single owner whereby a more unified industrial development could occur, since the existing zoning of the larger tract to the west would already allow this type of activity by right. The proposed rezoning will encourage reuse of an existing building on site and bring building into conformance with the current building and fire codes. The parcel is surrounded by M1 zone parcels on two sides, and the rezoning would be compatible with adjacent parcels. This completes staff's report.
I complete your report on that. Good, super. Let's move to 3B, which let applicant make the presentation. Is the applicant here tonight? Does that take a piece of property? Yes, thank you. There you are. Please, please come up, give us your name and address and move, kind of, you know, get real friendly with the mic there, so, thank you.
Does this work?
Great, super. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Myrna Fernandez. I'm with Ward Getson Associates. I'm the applicant for the zoning change for this 324 Riley Road. Because my address is 2500 Tango Wild, Houston, Texas, 77064. And so yes, I'd like to speak in favor of this zone change. As the staff mentioned, the property to the west of us was rezoned from Spectrum Five to an M1 zone and is since under contract by the same owner. So the intent is that these are unified in the same category, which will allow anything in the future to be more cohesive. Also, the precedent that the site adjacent to it was allowed rezoning within the last, I believe it was the last 12 months. So there's precedent for the zone change. And it will allow for the use of the new owner to continue their operations as intended.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Let's move in our agenda now to staff having to wrap up comments. Does it follow up on this? I haven't, okay. Let's move to item number four on our collective agendas, which allow people who wish to speak for or against this item. When you come up, be sure that you follow the, would you hold up one of those forms? Be sure you fill this out. This is a legal hearing, and we need to make sure that, that form is completed, either before you speak or go ahead and speak and fill it up as, right after you do and give it back to the secretary, so she'll be able to make out a part of the legal proceedings tonight. So, and if you would, kind of confine your remarks to, to reasonable timeframe and speak a little closer to the microphone, so everybody can benefit by your wisdom and, and presentation. Moving to item four, are there any, is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record or comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed zoning Is there anyone? And come on down and get one. Good. Thank you for being here. You can fill out one of those on the way.
Thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for having us here tonight. I want to start off by saying, I want to start by saying that my name is Reed Settlemeyer. I'm the owner and executive vice president of Biggie Crane and Rigging Company. We're based in San Leandro, which is basically Oakland, California. We are the largest crane rigging company in the western United States. We have a large operation in Houston, just west of here. We recent, we're looking for additional space to actually expand our facility and potentially make this our headquarters here in Pearland. Our current facility is about half a mile to the west. I, I don't want to go over, I, first of all, I thought the staff did an excellent job at sort of explaining the reasons why we're asking for the zoning change. Basically, we, we have under contract the property immediately to the west, a 10 acre parcel to the west. The two of these combined would be a 15 acre parcel. There's existing, existing buildings that have, you know, useful life left in them. We plan to reuse, reuse the buildings as they are in their existing configuration without doing too much development. Basically, we'd have a cohesive 15 acre parcel here. And the parcel, as you saw on the maps, M1 zoning is, is to three parcels to the north and immediately to the west. So we think this is a, we, we really appreciate the staff's recommending the zoning change. Finally, I'd like, I'd like to say that what a great staff you here, have here at Pearland. I develop stuff mostly in California, and the bureaucracy we go through is tremendous. I also love some of the comments I heard, I heard earlier about small government and rightsizing government. I wish the politicians in California would, would think the same way. But, but the friendliness in the staff we found in Houston and Pearland specifically is one of the driving reasons why we're planning to come here and, you know, potentially relocate 100 jobs into the city of Pearland. So once again, thank you to staff, Mr. Griggs, Latta, and the staff in general has been, been great here. So thank you for your time.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you, sir. You shouldn't fill out one of those forms. He just already done. Okay, that's good. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record or comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed zoning request? Is there anyone in the audience, anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record or comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed zoning request? For the third and final time for the purpose of record, before I move forward in the agenda, is there anyone in the audience who would like to enter into the record or comment statement or testimony regarding zoning request 17 00001? And hearing done, let us then move to item number five on our collective agendas, which is called council planning and zoning, and the staff entering into the record comments that they feel appropriate at this point. Does any of the council, let me go down through here. Councilmember Perez, I'll start with you.
Thank you, mayor. We've got a few questions. First, I want to just clarify a couple of things. The applicant's representative, Ward Getson Associates, is a prior employer of mine. The individual representative, we did not work at the same time, so I have no passage through the project or the applicant. I just want to make sure that that's disclosed. I do have some questions related to the use and the potential development of this site. It's not really going to affect how I feel on the zone change. I'm, I'm supporting the zone change, but I want to kind of get an understanding of what we're planning to do here in the future. Riley Road, this redevelopment area has always been a challenge for a particular reason. So if I could get either the owner or the engineer, if I could borrow y'all for a second to answer a couple of questions. So you had stated that you're going to, you're going to reuse the existing buildings. So are we looking for a zone change so you can do a change of occupancy? Are you looking to do some substantial renovation of this site?
At this point, we're planning to sort of use the buildings as is. The building, the building to the west, 322 Riley Road, is, is heavily screened and landscaped. But, you know, other than, other than maybe cutting some roll-up doors and maybe doing some office, T.I. office improvements, is basically using the property as is.
Is that long-term your plan for the site? Or are you, at some point, you're going to do some reinvestment in this?
I, I will do some reinvestment. We're looking at this as a potential new headquarters, potentially a new Texas headquarters. So I, I think it, you know, time will tell, you know, we're somewhat dependent upon the petrochemical industry as, even though, even though we're growing, the petrochemical industry has, has dampened the business somewhat. But we have about 10 acres to the west, and we, we need another at least 10 acres, and this is a 15 acres. So we think this gives us the room to grow. There's a nice office. There's about a 6,000 square foot office, and there's room to add more office, effectively in the complex at 322 Riley, which, which went through a zone change from Spec Five back to, back to its industrial within, I don't know, sometime in the last six to 18 months.
So that kind of brings me to, it wasn't necessarily my concern, just making sure that we're on the same page. You, you do realize there are not utilities in the area. There's no water, there's no sanitary. An expansion, particular expansion where we're increasing the office use would likely trigger sprinkler systems. So is that kind of investment that you want to make on this property in the long term?
Yeah. Yes, yes. In, in a short answer, yes. In a short answer, yes, based on, you know, some kind of five, you know, five-year longer trajectory.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
To answer your question, yes, we are willing to invest, should every, you know, should everything work out, work out for us in this facility.
Yes, we, we just don't have any plans to do any extension of the water line in that area.
Yeah, we've spoken to the fire marshal about that. Currently, 322 is doing, has a set detention pond, and that's how they're sprinkling their facility immediately to the west of 322 Riley.
So you're, you're looking at doing, excavating a pit or doing a, doing a storage facility?
Yes. That's, that's what we're looking at. That's, that's our kind of current plan. We actually, we're going to try to meet with the fire marshal. He left before, so we got a meeting with him tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, just a comment. That was, that was the major issue, because I'm in favor of the zone change. I think it puts everything in line, since you've got three properties that are M1 right there, and it just sort of makes sense. It measures up.
Yeah.
But it was a deal killer four or five years ago, because the applicant at that time couldn't get water out there. And so sprinklers were going to be required, and I think, I think that's correct. So anyhow, so I'm glad to hear that you guys are willing to go the distance on it.
Yeah, the water rights issue are the most significant development hurdle on this property. I believe that's why it sat for so long. And the owner of, of 322 spent, spent a lot of time, I believe they just recently, within the last, you know, two weeks, have, have completed the fire sprinkler and got the pump out of the detention basin, the onsite detention basin.
Good.
The fire marshal said it's $700,000 to bring the water line, so we'd, we'd have to be very committed to do that.
That, that was my only concern as well, so I'm glad y'all are, y'all are working on it.
Great, thank you.
More?
No, everybody's covered everything. I, I think it's a good plan.
And councilman Carvall?
Mayor, I had just one other question related to staff and the zoning. So we've got the north side, kind of a general question. We've got the north side of this, of Riley Road already zoned M1. We've got, you know, good, probably quarter of the south side zoned M1, obviously not related to this, this use and this application, but do we see any value or necessity in taking that whole corridor and adding M1 rather than the, the S5 or the SP5? Are we going to have any additional challenges if somebody wants to reuse any of the existing facilities and require zone change?
So one of the things that staff is looking into is to reevaluate the zoning in that area and also the development guidelines. And the thought is, you know, as you go towards Kirby, the kind of development that's happening now definitely has higher standards. But however, as you move towards the west, it's more rough. So we're looking at the transition and trying to look at the land use matrix and see what would be appropriate, and also devalue the development standards there.
Do you have an idea of the timeline for that?
No, we just started looking into some alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Also have any further questions, comments? Mr. Herrmann?
Mistress?
Let me ask you, 12 minutes?
I believe this was one of the first zone changes I was involved in on P&amp;Z. There was some discussion back then, because Spectrum District didn't have anything in it. So now that area, market is driving it to industrial, and so this makes sense, and I totally support it.
It's kind of a christening, isn't it, in a sense? Okay. Counselors, commissioners, have any further comments before we move forward? Staff having to wrap up comments?
Wanted to add that staff has been working with the development, developer. We have had a few pre-development meetings, so a lot of the utility issues were discussed, and the fire marshal sat in all their meetings. And the good news is that for the adjoining building, their certificate of occupancy is almost ready to be approved, so all other staff members have signed up off on that. So looks like they'll be ready to move into the next, building next door soon.
I like a little, what do you might call, California dreaming? Okay, there being no further comment before we, I can move to item number six, to let me adjourn this standalone doctored public hearing at 7:34. And in a light manner, I will open a joint public hearing between the council and, and Planning and Zoning Commission for Zone Application 17 00003. Ask the chairman of the planning commission to read into the record the legal reason for our meeting tonight.
Thank you, mayor. This is a request of Chris Mick of Kimley Horn, applicant on behalf of Matt Pasternak, president of Pasternak Management Incorporated, manager of 313 acre Pearland Joint Venture Owner, for approval of a change in zoning from the single-family residential R1 zoning to general business GB zoning district on approximately 5.9316 acres of land. General location is southeast corner of Liberty Drive and East Broadway Street.
Information in the record, let's move to item three on our agenda, application information case summary. Item 3A is staff report.
Yes, sir. All right. This is an aerial map showing the particular part of the parcel that we are looking to rezone. As you can see, city hall is within this picture. The zoning map shows that parcel as R1 with R1 to kind of the southwest and southeast, and then general business to the northeast and general commercial to the north above. It's located within the retail offices and services future land use plan. This is a view looking northeast along Liberty Drive, view looking east into the property, view looking southwest, back along Liberty, and then a view looking west into the shopping center. And then I did this map just to kind of break down the survey that was sent in, showing what part was R1, what part was general business, and the approximate linear feet for each portion of the map along the roadways. I can come back to this map later on, once we've gone through the rest of the report. This request is for a change in zoning from R1 to general business. The proposed land to be rezoned is part of a larger 16.835 acre parcel of land. The larger portion of this parcel is currently zoned general business. The applicant is currently, has a purchaser who intends to construct an approximate 36,000 square foot grocery store on site and leave the applicant with additional land for future retail development. Staff has received no comment sheets, about four phone calls, and three emails that were sent through the contact city council website regarding the proposed request. Staff recommends approval of the requested change in zoning from R1 to general business on the approximate 5.9316 acre site for the following reasons. The R1 zone portion of the property is not in conformance with the future land use plan, which designates the parcel for retail offices and services. The proposed zoning of general business on the subject property would be in conformance with the future land use designation from the comprehensive plan. The subject property, being 5.9316 acres, is part of the larger 16.835 acre parcel, of which the remaining area is all zoned general business. Rezoning this portion would make a cohesively developable piece of property. Frontage on Liberty Drive, which is a major collector and adjacency to non-residential uses renders the subject property improbable for single-family residential development that would be permitted within the R1 zoning district. The uses permitted by the proposed zoning district will be compatible to the existing non-residential uses around the subject parcel. This completes staff's report.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Let's move on our agenda to item B, 3B, applicant presentation. Is the applicant here to make a pres, there he is, back there. I saw you fall to go. Thank you for being here.
Brian Gillis.
Routine, name, dress, and all that sort of thing.
Brian Gillis with Kimley Horn Associates. 11700 KD Freeway, Houston, Texas. Here on behalf of the, or the landowner regarding the rezoning. Staff did a good job of explaining the purpose of the rezone, and basically it's to get a cohesive Um, staff did a good job of explaining the purpose of the rezone, and basically it's to get a cohesive chunk of land that's developable. The, right now, we don't have a plan for the entire site. We just wanna get it rezoned, so that in the future, this can all be developed as one, one unit. Uh, the one thing to note, um, the southeast corner of the site, that's where we're planning to have it platted as a detention reserve. So that piece that's kind of adjacent to the, uh, the school will have a detention basin. That's the one thing we do have planned out. So I'm here for any questions, but basically staff did a good job of explaining the purpose of the rezoning.
Good, I appreciate those, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. Thank you, sir. Does the staff have any wrap-up comments at this point? Does it be back to the start? Okay, that's good. Okay. Let's move down to item four on our agenda, which is let persons wishing to speak for or against this particular proposal. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed request? Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak. I am a parent of a Shady Crest, uh, student that goes to school over here. The city hall's always been a good neighbor of that school. We're really excited about our kid attending that school. That is a fantastic school and something that's a, uh, pride of the Pearland ISD. So as a parent of a student there, we are, at least speaking for myself, I have no objection to a grocery store going in at that corner. I have no objection to even the zoning change. The one thing I asked is before the zone change is agreed upon or, or approved, that we have the applicant, the landowner, commit to build a privacy fence between the school and the new commercial development, whether there's a detention pond there or not. The school's been built in a residential area. When it was zoned, that residential area was zoned around the school. You're giving that landowner a benefit by, uh, approving that zone change? I think it's the least that landowner can do, is provide the school with a privacy fence between the school and this new commercial development. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Good. I appreciate those comments, thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Woody Owens, twenty-one seventeen Country Club Drive, Pearland, seven seven five eight one. I think part of it's been answered, uh, when I was looking at it today, we were only two hundred feet away from Shady Crest on the facility, and I guess with the detention site, it moves it to the three hundred. And I was concerned about that, 'cause all my twelve years on council, we'd never let anybody get that close. Especially, and then one point that was made, you know, it's gonna be selling beer and wine, uh, through there. So that, that was a concern there, because not only Shady Crest School there, but baseball and football, Little League, and, and all of that practice out there. There is one thing that, uh, you had on your item, uh, on your agenda tonight to, uh, for a package store. And it's under basically the same, uh, way that, uh, this is on the zoning, so it was considered on that. I just wanna make sure that at some point in time, there is not a, uh, another building built right next to it that is a package store for liquor, just like at Costco is over there. They take their facility, they build another store beside it, and that's where they sell their liquor out of. And I don't think that's needed within there, and, and like Matt, I've got a granddaughter that goes over, and so I'm very protective of that. So the other concern that I had also, and I don't know, I, I guess maybe y'all done a traffic study on something over there on the flow of traffic? I don't know if y'all been in there to, uh, see the traffic come by in the morning and the afternoon from Shady Crest, but it builds up, uh, quite extensively through there, on, on there. And plus, you got the residents coming through. You got to cut through, uh, also coming in off of roadway to come in, go to the light. And I can see with the entrance of that being on Liberty, uh, that there's gonna be a traffic problem, 'cause you're gonna have to have your trucks, eighteen-wheelers come in and unload, do whatever there at the store. And you're not a great distance from the light on five eighteen to where the entrance is going in. And with the future development on that site, I don't know if Tech Dot will allow you to do an entrance off of five eighteen for that. If you do, you're gonna have to have some kind of a stacking lane going in there to stack traffic or not. Everybody knows what we go through in the afternoon, uh, and mornings on five eighteen or Broadway, whichever way you wanna call it. The traffic is just tremendous through there, so that's a, that's a big concern that, that I had on there. And I guess on, I have one other one on the detention site, but he says that they're, they're building that. I just think, you know, basically, there's a, there's a better location for that store than right there. There's a lot of congestion, a lot of problems there, and I know when we was on council, we had to buy that little clip in order to get traffic off of five eighteen into Liberty there. We paid a handsome sum for that little corner clip in order to do that. I guess that's big enough for a, uh, large truck to come through, to get through there. But you only have less than a hundred feet to get in where your entrance at, so if you get a, you know, a large truck, an eighteen-wheeler, you take up almost twenty-five feet through there, when then you're gonna back up a lot of traffic. So that was my main concern, uh, that we had, and I, and I'm hoping that you do take a look at it on there for the traffic impact for that area. It's gonna be substantial, and there's gonna be a, a lot of backup in the traffic right there in that area. And of course, we got all the people who work for the city that come through there and try to park. So appreciate it, thank you a lot.
I appreciate your comments, I really do. Is there anyone else who'd like to enter? Oh, we got one coming up. Good, thank you for being here tonight.
I just want, my name is Dina Hanks, and I just wanted to clarify that Matt Hanks, my husband, was not only speaking for himself as a Shady Crest parent, but I am the Shady Crest PTA president, and there's a whole lot of mamas that are not real happy about this. So I just wanted to clarify that he's not only speaking for himself, but for a lot more mamas and daddies out there, so thanks.
Thank you. Did, did you fill out one of those forms?
Doing it right now. Thanks, Mayor.
Get, get you on the record there. You're gonna fuss at your husband, we gotta get your record here. Okay, is there anyone else? Yeah, please come down, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. My name is John Kavanaugh. I live on, uh, Country Club, uh, twenty-one twenty-seven Country Club Drive, seven seven five eight one. Uh, I also wanted to express my concern with a, uh, grocery store going in at this location. Within one point one miles, according to Google, we have four other major grocery store chains in, uh, from, from this exact location, with Walmart, Krogers, HEB, and Aldi already there. And on top of Mr. Owens's, uh, point about the traffic, I think that will really put a traffic strain on us from Pearland Parkway and five eighteen, and now this intersection of Liberty and five eighteen, and down at Dixie Farm and, uh, five eighteen. There'll be three major ones in a row, but, uh, directly across the street of Liberty, the large, uh, complex that is there, at least three, uh, grocery stores have failed in the time that I've lived here in Pearland. And I wanted people to consider that before, uh, granting this request tonight. As, as you know, if a grocery store chain, uh, fails or pulls out for any reason, that is a very large, uh, building to fill. Uh, and it's, and it's very difficult. The complex across the street from Liberty went years vacant. Uh, and we've had a lot of problems in there, in and out over the years. So, uh, Food Town, Food King, the one in Friendswood that failed, uh, is still vacant. I think it was finally purchased by a church, but, uh, it was an eyesore and a problem for many years. So like I said, with, uh, with Krogers and HEB and Walmart and Aldi, all within one mile, or one point one mile, six thousand feet, uh, I really considers, uh, consider this to be overdevelopment, and I caution and ask you, uh, to consider that. And thank you for, uh, your time, and, uh, leadership at all levels is difficult, so I appreciate y'all, uh, your time and effort. Thank you.
Good, appreciate those comments, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to enter into the record a comment or statement regarding this zone change? Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony regarding this proposed zone change? The third and final time for the purpose of the record before I move forward on the agenda, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to enter into the record a comment statement or testimony regarding zone change seventeen zero 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 three? And hearing done, let us move then to item number five on our agenda, which is council, planning commission, and staff resolving questions we might have. And I'll start with Councilmember Carbonne. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess first up, um, in terms of a privacy fence, can staff give us some clarification on what's required by the UDC for that, I guess, southeast corner?
Sure thing. Uh, all property that is either zoned residential or in a residential use, any commercial development that would abut those areas would require either a six-foot fence, uh, a six-foot wall, masonry wall, with a twenty-five-foot buffer or a thirty-foot buffer with landscaping.
And currently, I, I know on the map, it shows it's R1, even though the schools there, that, that would still trigger that requirement?
Because of the zoning, correct?
Okay. I guess, does, can the applicant speak to, to what their plans are in regards to, to setbacks or fence?
So currently along that, that property line, there is a, or, an existing twenty-foot easement. Um, it's an alley access easement, um, that, you know, obviously we weren't planning to build in anyways. So that portion that, that's actually getting rezoned, we don't, we don't have any plans for it, except for, uh, I mentioned the detention basin. And you could kind of see on the map, um, there's a line that, that comes down and then jogs over a little bit, and then comes down again. That's, that's the line for the detention basin. So the, the piece that's adjacent to the elementary school will have basically a detention basin the entire width of, of the property line that's adjacent to the elementary school.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps. So basically, the twenty-five, or roughly about twenty-five percent of the, the piece that's getting rezoned, the red, the, the southeast corner will be detention basin.
So the, the area of the land that abuts the school and looks like a track is gonna be detention?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess the question back to staff, what's the UDC gonna require? Are they, is that gonna trigger, uh, the six-foot masonry wall? Or would that, would that serve as a, the, the setback in lieu of a wall?
That would count as their thirty-foot buffer.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I under, in, in terms of the fence, I understand the concerns of the, the residents and the, and the parents. I'd love to see a, a way, um, to, to work that in there. I don't know legally how, since this is a rezone. But I, I'd love to be able to work something out in that regard. In regards to the, the, the question with the package store, uh, that, that would be through a CUP process, and I, I can tell you that I, I would not be in favor of that. And depending on who's sitting up here on council, I can't imagine they'd be in favor either. And, and finally, on the traffic study, or, or the, the traffic issues, will there be a, a TIA done before any development?
A TIA would possibly be required at plating, if not at, uh, permit. I would let, uh, Director of Engineering speak on that, since that is his realm.
Councilor, uh, Robert Upson, um, yes, we would require a technical review of that, because the information track room must take care of interference. So yes, we would require that, uh, as a process identified.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, have any more?
Um, yeah, I would also like to see some kind of a, uh, not just only a buffering, but some type of wall or fencing, um, put up there. There's a lot of residents and, uh, parents, uh, that kids go to school there are concerned with that. And with it being a, a, a zone change from a residential to a commercial, um, I, I, I can see how that can be warranted, but, um, that's kind of where I stand. Uh, but other than that, I, I wouldn't have a problem with, uh, the store going in there.
I think the issue's not, uh, whether it's, uh, we have a requirement that we don't want liquor sold near our schools. A lot of places, you can do it all over town, and there are places where it's, it's not a problem, and that's, it is being sold in other areas. And, uh, that was, that's one of the main concerns we have, is that, uh, this rearrange, the zone change is to accommodate, move it around to make it, move it, remove the three-hundred-foot, uh, requirement. The, uh, the other is the, uh, traffic impact analysis you're gonna, that's gonna be required. Every afternoon, up down the street, let's see if I can see, in this direction, there's a, there's a, there's a school that gets out to Shady Crest. And they dump out on Liberty Drive, and it's a bumper-to-bumper from right back about quarter of a mile back, and, uh, until the light changes, and everybody wants to go right, uh, straight instead of right. And so it's a, that's gonna be a real challenge with, with, uh, with going home traffic and, uh, coming in traffic at the same time. So that's gonna be really a traffic jam area, high-traffic area. Now, that's where the traffic impact analysis will, will, uh, shed a little light on that issue, too. But, uh, I think, um, uh, grocery stores are fine. Uh, there, there could probably be a better location for it than there, because it's so close to school and, uh, and with the traffic impacts, so. Councilmember Wardner?
I, I guess I'll go off-track with everybody else. We're talking about a zone change here, not what's gonna happen to adjoining piece of property.
That's true. That would not, that's more a job, that's, that's the ultimate job.
But a, a couple of things that have been brought up, I'm glad Councilmember Carbonne brought up the CUP. A package store would have to have the approval of this body. I, I'll be honest, that's one of the few CUPs I support. I think that is a use that government should look at, um, before it comes in. Entrance and exit, I, I did some quick math off the map that was up there. They've got seven hundred and fifty-two feet along five eighteen and six hundred and fifty-five feet on Liberty. I, I don't know of any Tech Dot requirement that wouldn't allow at least one curb cut in there. So, uh, again, and, and that's for a traffic impact study, once we get to the plating stage, not during a, a zone change. Five years I've been up here, we've never talked about traffic impact on a zone change. Um, I, I understand that we like to see green space. I, a couple of the comments we got were, we wanna see the trees. I, I've said this before, I've gotten trouble for it before, but it's truly how I believe, buy the land. I mean, this is still owned by a private property, and they have a right to develop it. Um, and, and the area that we've kind of focused on is already zoned. It's outside of any restriction for the sale of liquor. Um, they, they moved the store to get it where everything fit in that GB. So now we're talking about five acres that's zoned R1, that I don't think there's any way you could develop at R1. By, and, and you talk about traffic impacts. That's going to, you know, in, increase the number of people living in the area coming through. The, the school was brought up for traffic. I will tell you, please contact the state of Texas. They haven't increased, um, transportation funding to schools since probably the mid-eighties. Um, that's why you don't see busing within two miles, because the school districts just can't afford to bus those kids that the state doesn't reimburse, um, reimburse us for, or the school district for. So, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the zone change, because I don't see where it's developable as R1. Um, i- if there's a group that wants to come in, you know, the, the fence, I honestly would be more concerned once they figure out what they're gonna do with this, because that's going to be closer to the school than the grocery store is. Um, even though if they do put the detention where they're saying there is, none of it will be adjacent. It'll be very much like the church that put their detention, the church and the funeral home, that put their detentions at the back of the property to act as that buffer. So, um, and, and while I'm on it, I will go on to my other pet peeve with the state. We treat school districts differently than we treat anybody else that keeps kids, including daycares, on their distance, um, from places that sell liquor, and most of them are door-to-door. School districts, they put it property line to property line. If you dropped CJ Harris or any of, pretty much any of the other elementaries, I don't think three hundred feet would have ever been an issue. Shady Crest, the school district did the right thing back then, and they bought enough land to buffer it. Um, but there, I don't think there'd be anything to be said if it was a normal elementary footprint. Um, but that property line to property line is what- But that property line to property line is what brought this up. And the fact that it's not front door to front door, interestingly enough, if you measure front door to front door, the grocery store and Gringo's are roughly the same distance by the way you would measure door-to-door by roadways. One of them consumes on, one of them's only off-site consumption. God, I remember when Gringo's opened, and Shady Crest was already there, I don't remember anybody having an issue with that. So, I mean, it's an interesting deal. If it's truly that we want green space, I've been here my whole life. I'd love to have green space back. But that's not something I think government should tell private property, "You just can't develop." Or in the case of, "We have too many grocery stores," I for sure do not believe that the government should be the market setter and step into a free market and say, "We think we have too many of X, Y, or Z." It's just not the place of the government. That's not a free market. And I fully support the rights of private residents, private landowners, and businesses.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, not to beat a dead horse, but this Costco liquor package sale issue, because some people had reached out to me and some others when they saw on the news that Costco was getting a liquor store. So when the voters in Pearland approved the sale of liquor and liquor stores alone in Pearland, before council made it a C U P requirement, Costco was able to get the liquor store put in. Otherwise, had they done that today, they wouldn't have the time. They'd have to come to us and we'd have to approve it, because they would not be entitled to it as a matter of right, like they were at the time when they hit that short window. So just to be clear on that issue. One thing, I'm okay with, just like some of the comments have been made, I'm okay with a grocery store here. I think that's not the issue as much. I know we're zoning the land, but I think the issue is just the close proximity to the school. And so in addition to the privacy fence, I'm wondering with this detention pond, are you talking about some kind of wet detention base, dry?
It's dry.
Dry? Okay. And then where, so if you look at, I don't know if you can see the map up here, but it's this commercial development, twenty-four, twenty-two. You're talking about the southeast corner, but that detention pond just sort of come from that development straight down to the southeast corner, or how would that be positioned?
Yeah. So basically from the northeast corner where that chunk is plotted out, we have the line come straight down, it's kind of a dash line, and then it chunks over a little bit to the west, and then continues down. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so... This line here, and then it comes over, and then comes down here.
So that entire area is what you proposed to be a dry detention pond?
Correct.
I think that you guys ought to definitely work that issue out, not the detention pond issue now that knowing that it's going to be dry. I was going to propose if it was wet, you need to have some safety ledges, because there's an issue there close to the... But I think you should work the issue out with regard to the fence. And what you're hearing today with staff, and just be open-minded about that possibility. I understand that it's a zone change, and it seems like everybody's on board with getting you guys in. And I'm glad you guys reworked the number with regard to positioning your potential store to keep it outside of that three-hundred-foot variance, which didn't force our hand on the issue. But I think you need to be open-minded about that.
So I'm a little torn on this. One, it is a zone change. Zone change, we don't allow, or we don't have any right to put conditions on the site plan as we would a C U P, as we currently do, or a P D. You've been in the industry long enough, you know enough of the loopholes. None of the things we're asking for can we require in our current criteria. We can't make you put that pond there. We can't make you build the fence because we have an alternative. And very similar to what happened when the H E B came in, they applied for a zone change, promised us the moon and the stars, and then swept the rug out from underneath us as soon as they got the zone change. Told us, "Yeah, we'll do all the conditions that are in the P D, we just need the zone change so we have a little bit more freedom." And as soon as they got the zone change, they came back almost immediately and said, "Yeah, we've decided that's not cost-effective." I can't, we have no provision in our current criteria that says, "Put that pond there." That pond location is the most inefficient, as you well know. It's furthest from either available outfall. It'll eat up the most amount of land, which will cost you, your owner, the most amount of money. And if I were your owner, I would probably make a suggestion, "Why am I having to eat up that much land?" Since it's a pond size, the amount of land that it takes up is a function of surface area and volume, the further you get away from the outfall, the less depth you have, I'm sorry, surface area and depth, further away you get from the outfall, the less depth you have, the more area you need. And the more land that they are required to give up for their pond, the more it costs them. If I were the owner, I really wouldn't be excited about that. You know, the silliness of it is, had we not seen before what y'all were proposing, this probably wouldn't have come up. It wouldn't have come up to the attention of the P T A, wouldn't have come to our attention that there was an issue here. And now, you know, I can't pretend as if I didn't see anything. I honestly don't know how I want to vote on this, because I'm fully in agreement with Councilmember Wardno. I don't think it's government's right to put the thumb on you. You know, I think that there is certainly a sense in the general to allow that tract to be general business and not R one, to make a more cohesive piece of land for it to be developed commercially. But there are some concerns about what y'all are proposing. Had we not been invited to see those concerns by the previous application, we probably wouldn't be in this much controversy. You know, if we were talking about something, and I hate using these tools for this, but if we were talking about doing a C U P, if we were talking about doing a P D, which is the only tool really you'd have available, where we'd have the opportunity to input on the site plan, then, you know, we could ask for all those things under the rules that we have them now. You know, it causes me great concern when you're talking about putting that detention pond, which will, it'll be deep. It'll be at least five or six feet deep. Every detention pond on a school, and I've designed several schools, they all have a fence around them. Not because they're vertical wall, but because it is going to be four-to-one. If you have elementary school students in there, a lot of them are not the best walkers. They get down on a four-to-one slope, they're probably not getting out on their own. You know, without some, it causes me discomfort that I can't force you to put the fence. We have a buffering requirement. You know, I hate to put you, it goes against a lot of things that I hate about this position. I hate putting you in a situation where you don't know the outcome. But I can't tell you honestly how I want to vote on this. One half of me really says, "It's a zone change, I should vote on the zone change." It has absolutely nothing to do with the use, it has absolutely nothing to do with the site plan, it's just a zone change. But frankly, you made a mistake. You showed us what you wanted to do, and you caused a lot of stir. And now I can't act as if I don't know that. So I'm torn, because there are some real concerns about putting that there, concerns that the citizens have already expressed. You agree with them or don't agree with them, they're their concerns. I don't have kids that go to that school, but I do have a mentee that goes to that school. I visit that school quite often. You know, I share some of their concerns. I also share the concerns that were brought up by John, that there are a lot of grocery stores in the area that have failed. And we're about to have another grocery store that anchored a shopping center that's going to be abandoned. So we're going to put a grocery store here, and we're going to have a new one across the street from it, have a new one down the street from it, and we're going to have an abandoned one in the middle of town. Again, not really the way I like to use this position, but, you know, is it really worth all this stir so you don't go into, so to wait to be able to go into the Kroger's vacant space, which is probably more than enough square footage for what they're proposing? You know, honestly, I'll probably end up voting for the zone change, because honestly, it's what I should do. The zone change in and of itself, positioned by itself, should be voted for, because it's not, it's not relevant to what you're proposing. But you've really put me in a precarious position. And it's going to be real difficult for all of us. Once you get the zone change and you have the ability to put the grocery store in there with a strategically-placed property line, and then you have right to ask for a variance for shared parking, which is, I'm sure that's what you're proposing, that's what I would propose. And there really wouldn't be a good reason to deny that either. But, you know, we're not really, we're not really using the tools the way we intended to. With respect to traffic, look, there's, I'm going to jump a few steps. You know, if you're going to trigger a T I A, probably borderline, returning movements in the peak hour to trigger it based on our rules of thumb. Grocery stores don't have a whole lot of peak hour traffic. You know, there's not a whole lot of people that shop at the grocery store at seven A M. Having done that this morning, I can tell you, there's nobody else there. So even if we did, even if we did enough to do the T I A, or if your staff decided, "Look, we're going to get a second look at this because of the concerns of council." No one knows how text dot's going to look at this, proximity to a major intersection that's already signalized. You're going to have your driveway probably three-hundred-and-fifty foot from that spacing, so you can probably squeeze in another one or get joint access to the adjacent property. There's no way we're going to get turn lane there, it's just not safe. So even if we did a T I A, there's nothing we can do to mitigate the traffic. So I don't think that that's really a concern because of how traffic moves there. I don't think that there's going to be any issue with getting those driveways. I just, I kind of wish there was a way that I could get better assurance that y'all are going to do what y'all propose y'all are going to do. Like I said, we've done that before. H E B did exactly that to us, promised us the moon and the stars, and then left us hanging. Again, I'll... I mean, I would... The only way I could force a P D is to vote against the zone change. And I just don't feel comfortable that I have the merits to vote against the zone change to force you to do something that I want you to do. I just, I go back to a lot of conversations that Councilmember Wardno and I have had on this subject particularly, about what's the role of government? Is the role of government to force you to do what I want you to do? It's a struggle for me, because I'm half, yeah, vote against it and force you to do a P D. I think that's what's, I wouldn't say right, but could be considered appropriate. But the way this process is intended, I kind of need to vote for it. So I'm torn. I don't know how I'm going to go.
Well, and let me just, a quick follow-up. Councilmember Perez would probably agree with me. While he doesn't have any kids there, I'm of the mindset that every kid there is my kid. I just kind of see it like that, given that I represent Pearland as a whole. So I'm really concerned about my constituents, especially those that can't speak for themselves. So my point in you saying, "I think you should be open with regard to what you're hearing," is just because, I don't know if you're familiar with the H E B situation, but it was delayed, almost died. A P D was required as a result, and we can vote it down. And while some councilmembers might not feel that they can, other members feel that, or they could vote it down. There's other members that feel that we could vote it down, which means you die at the zone change. So, you know, in my opinion, you should either consider making it harder on yourself or making it easier on yourself.
You know, Councilmember Hill brought up a good point, that they are all our kids. Everybody up here now has had kids or has kids that'll be going through. But that brings up an interesting thing, that we're also more than one school district. And I can think of one example off the top of my head, where we have a junior high and an elementary school with a C V S that sells beer and wine at about the same distance. I honestly have not heard one complaint from that. Now, the Starbucks next to them wanted to come in and do the same thing. And we said no, because, honestly, I looked for a reason, because I didn't see where Starbucks selling wine to adults was an issue with a junior high that had a fence in between them that the junior high installed at the time of construction. But door-to-door, it was there first, I mean, there was just no way to do it. So we do have precedent in the city where something very similar to this has been done, and without any negative effect that I know of. And you want to talk about traffic, go look at Kirby and five-eighteen. So, you know, and honestly, I drive there on a fairly regular basis for living on this side of town, and I just don't have any issues with it. So if we are going to look as a whole, if we are going to look at all our kids that are in Pearland, there is precedent.
Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, I don't disagree that there is precedent. You can drive all over Houston where there's no zoning and find some pretty abhorrent things next to a school. Look, I went to a college that's in the middle of Third Ward. So, you know, there's... So, you know, there's always going to be the circular conversation, again, that you and I very much enjoy having, about what the role in government is. I can't attest to the debate or the conversation about the C V S next to the schools at Kirby and Broadway. I wasn't on council at that time. You know, and you can certainly point to the potential hypocrisy of that existing and us denying this. I would say, my argument would be, there has been no shortage of people that have expressed their concern. You know, who, are we to represent our opinions, are we to represent their concerns? And that's where I'm, again, that's where I'm torn. There are number, I've not heard one person who's come out in support and said, "I really don't care. I'd like to have the grocery store there." I think one was kind of on the fence. You know, I have to be compelled by the concerns of the people who are affected by this. Otherwise, I'm just not doing my job. And that's why it's really difficult to me. I mean, it's a lot of controversy over a grocery store, don't get me wrong. I feel some of it can feel a little silly. Right now, it kind of feels a little silly. Had we done, had we had a different approach, wouldn't have this controversy. But we are where we are. You know, it wouldn't hurt my feelings if y'all proposed a P D that guaranteed a site plan and guaranteed a perimeter fence and guaranteed the pond location as opposed to a zone change. Wouldn't hurt my feelings a bit. Right now, I would say that at best you have uncertainty as to the outcome of the zone change. You know, when I'm facing these situations, I try and remove leverage at any opportunity I can. That's why I tell my clients, "Don't give an opportunity for anybody to put leverage on your track." Right now, you got a lot of leverage on your track. You have an uncertain outcome for your client. I think the P D would probably give you, though it's a tool that I don't particularly care to use for this, or I don't recommend it to my clients to be used for this, would probably give you a little bit more certainty as to the outcome. So maybe something you want to consider.
Councilor, have any further questions or comment or on this? Of any of that? You know, the issue tonight is whether we approve its change of the zoning, not what goes on there, but we know what's going on there, which creates a problem, because we know that that issue was still hanging out there, so it needs to surface. But with that council information added in, I'll ask Chairman of the Planning Commission if he or the Planning Commission have
Commissioners?
supplementary comments about this issue?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. First off, you know, it's...
First off, you know, as far as the, the way I feel about government and stuff, and, you know, a lot of the things that we do, we're, our city council is supposed to be representative of the people, and we're supposed to do what the people wants us to do, not what our own thoughts are. We didn't get in for certain positions to all of a sudden, that we're so much smarter than you are, that we're going to do stuff. We still should go with the people that, that are affected by things. As being a PNZ Commissioner on this, I look at it kind of the same way, even though we were appointed by the city council, we're still supposed to listen to what the people have to say about it. Now, as far as the grocery stores such as that, if, if I was developing that piece of property and, and, and I was going to put in a store there, and I had a bunch of mothers coming to me and telling me, I want a fence put in there, I'd put a fence in there, because those mothers are going to be the same ones, are going to be passing you up going to HEB and going to the other stores on down the road. And, and to me, I guarantee you, I, I know some of the mothers there, in that, in that school and stuff, and they will pass you right on up and go straight on to the other stores if you do not put in a fence. So, I mean, I think that a fence is something that, that needs to go in there. They talked about putting in a, the detention pond, whether it's dry or not. We have rains here, if we get enough rain in there and we get water in it, we're talking about kids that are in kindergarten or pre-K, all the way through fourth grade. We got some kids, they've got a, they've got a chain link up there now, but God forbid one of those little munchkins get over it and get over into the detention pond and, and get hurt. You know, I, I feel very strongly that we need to have it. Now, as far as the zone change, yeah, I'm kind of torn like Commissioner Perez and, and Hill on this, is because it, it's, it should be something that all we are to be looking at, should we, does it make sense to go with a zone change on this? And I think that it does, because there's no way that we're going to have residential, residential in there. It basically kills part of the property. But, on the other hand, you know, like I said, if you want to be a good neighbor, I think the best thing that you can do is just sit and, and hear that you're going to put up a fence and then stick to it. Because if you don't, I guarantee you, the buyers of that, of that, or the customers of that store will be few and far between in this area.
Mayor?
Here.
Commissioners, have any other questions?
I've just got a couple. Is there a fence on the north side of the Shady Crest property currently?
I believe there's a chain link fence.
So, I guess the discussion about fencing is the type of fence, so which is proper for, for fencing off the property or not?
If you have a detention pond, you probably need to fence that off.
So, the, the second, the second thing I want to talk about is the detention pond. I've talked about this for years now, that the city lacks the standards for detention ponds, as far as safety and, and that concerning them. There's very few engineering standards that, that help on straight development such as this. Wet detention ponds are still a viable option for developers. They're not, they're allowed. We've seen them go in recently, so that's an option on the table. Going back to how I learned doing this as a resident coming into PNZ, looking at zone changes, is always look at the best use for the property, zone changes or flat zone changes. You can't have anything else in front of you except for that. So, what's the best use of the property? GB, because nobody's going to put a subdivision in that R1 slot. So, I would say this, I would be, I would lean for it. The developer does have a couple of other options. They can risk the up or down vote, they can come back with a PD, or they could go around council with cluster development. That's another option that's out there. All three are in essence zone changes. So, I would like to see the zone change go through and have a developer be a good citizen and react to what he's heard here and, and do the right thing as far as the detention and fencing. Comments on our UDC and, and land rate matrix uses? We've heard a lot of comments recently wanting to do away with restrictions on hotels or this business or that business. This is a prime example, if this business was allowed or had to do a CUP, this would give us the opportunity to resolve that. Now, we're up against a yes or no vote. Counsel is. Anyway, that's all, yep.
Okay. I'd like to plead your pardon. Does the Planning Commission or our council have any further comments at this point?
Yep.
I, I think Councilman Perez circled it four or five times, and it, it's going to be tough. When it comes back to first reading, I'll probably ask you if you're here, hopefully you'll be here, and I'll ask if, if your applicant and the, the users agreed to put up a fence, and that's probably going to drive a lot in, in my vote, because I think you've clearly heard that, that the citizens want a fence. Can we force you to or not? I'm going to ask you on the record if you're going to put one up or not, and that's probably going to have a large impact on my vote, and I would think that it, it might be a, a further discussion point. So, if you can get some clarity before you come back, that would certainly be helpful.
Staff have any wrap-up comments at this point? I'm going to move to item number six, which allows me to adjourn this standalone Dr. Public Hearing at 8:26. Add in a like manner. Let me open a joint special meeting agenda. City Council, City of Pearland, and Zoning Commission, City of Pearland, Monday, March the 20th, year 2017. And it's scheduled for 7:30, but we're catching up here pretty, pretty well here. Purpose of the meeting is a summary of the joint public workshop of the proposed planned development Old Town Business Park, a commercial and light industrial development located on the west side of Main Street, State Highway 35, and South Royce Dyer Road. And I'd like to have staff. I'll turn this over to staff at this point.
All right. And with workshops, this is, of course, a, a joint workshop for everybody to have comment on our proposed development. After the workshop, staff will provide the applicant a revised list of comments generated from tonight's discussion. The applicant will then have time to make adjustments to their plans before submitting for the joint public hearing, which is a part of the process, in order to change the zone from what it currently is to a planned development. The tentative joint public hearing date for this item is May 15th of this year. The Old Town Business Park is going, or proposed to be located along the west side of North Main Street, State Highway 35. The applicant is proposing the development of a commercial facility along 35 that involves some light industrial towards the rear of the property. Currently, the property is zoned M1 light industrial, and the applicant is proposing both general business and M1 light industrial as base zoning split between the two phases. This is an aerial map showing the subject property. You can see Main Street and Rice Dryer Road, where the property has frontage on along both sides. The zoning map shows that it's entirely within the M1 zoning classification. There's some general commercial across Main Street and to the south, and then there's planned development across the railroad track. The future land use plan shows primarily industrial, along with a small portion being public, semi-public. Staff kind of believes that, that public, semi-public actually should have been southern for the Pearland ISD property. We don't exactly know why that is the way it is, but that's what it shows. So, this is their design plan. You can see, it's, the two red buildings are what would be the general business. It's the phase plan, is split across the T there, where the crossbar is the light industrial portion, and the up and down bit is the general business. This is a proposed elevation for the general business building. You can see it has some masonry to it, a larger percentage of transparency with the glass, and then some rather industrial-looking facade to it. And then this is kind of the standard prototype for their industrial portion, which would be at the rear. Each of these buildings includes a portion of the building dedicated to office, and then the rest would be in either warehouse or some industrial activity. Staff comments, the site is in the Business Park, North Catalyst area, in the recently adopted State Highway 35 corridor redevelopment strategy. It'll provide higher quality of development for the entire tract of land, where only the front is in the corridor overlay district, which would be required. Staff is working with the applicant on a development agreement for drainage and roadway infrastructure improvements, as well as other comments generated from the Development Review Committee as their review for the planned development. Let's complete staff's comments and the report, and the applicant should be here to make a presentation.
Why don't we sort of share some of our thoughts on this, starting with Councilmember Carbone and-
I, I believe the applicant, is the applicant here to make a presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Maybe we can listen to that first, Mayor? Yep.
We want to listen to the applicant.
Yeah. See here, we, we don't have an agenda item for speaking to the applicant, so we're just kind of, I'm trying to get the information so we know how to, how to discuss this amongst ourselves and share it with, with you, so that would be good.
Yes, sir. My name's Bobby Orr, 5400 Katy Freeway, Houston 77007, and I'm the owner of the property and the developer. I think the pictures are self-explanatory. We've had a couple of pre-development meetings with the city and Fire Marshal and, and everyone involved, and, and have taken all the input in. We recommended doing the PD, which we've done. We, our intention is to build that first building that fronts North Main there, and then kind of let the market dictate how quickly we go forward with the rest of the project. We've got a curb cut there, existing curb cut. There's also, based on the plat of the old Walmart, that's now the Pearland ISD building, there is access available to us through there, so we, in addition to one curb cut on 35, would have access through the Pearland ISD property to the light that's there at the entrance to their building and to Walmart. We think there's a, a demand for what we've proposed. We're excited about doing something in Pearland. We have gotten great support and great information from both the City of Pearland staff, as well as Pearland Economic Development. It's actually, as I said in my first meeting, and I own property all over town and all over Houston, this was a real breath of fresh air. So, we're excited and we'll hope you'll give us your comments, and hopefully we can go forward. We are also on a parallel track to get the first building permitted, so once we get this approved, then we will go pretty quickly into submitting our plans for the construction of the first building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments?
I, I like the development, Mayor.
Okay.
I, I like the industrial look, I think it makes sense there, in terms of stucco and transparency. I'm sure staff has, has squeezed as much out of you as possible. I, that doesn't concern me as much for this, this area, especially in those back buildings, but if you can live with it, I think it's a good-looking development.
Councilmember?
I too, I, I think this is great. I'm really excited to see something come in in this area, to help kind of maybe spawn some other development along 35, where it hasn't been developed yet. So, I'm, I'm thrilled with seeing something like this in this area.
This is not a zone change or anything other than a discussion of a project he has in mind, and we've had to go through a process of discussing it and talking about it, and at some point here, we'll go do a formal request for building permits and that sort of thing later. And it kind of gives them some guidance as well of, of, do we kind of like it, or do we have a problem with it? And I think it has a, has a distinct advantage. That's, that's, that is one of the five state highways that goes through Pearland, 35 is. And as a result, we, we're, we're starting what is called a, a entrance and corridor enhancement. We're going to be doing an awful lot of landscaping and stuff in there, so the purrier can make it, the more you're going to look like you're part of the game. And otherwise, it may stand out as, wow, he, he didn't get the message. But that's just something to think about as we go through the process. I think it's something that, I think it fits, because it's pretty close to railroad track over there, and I think it works.
Well, you'll definitely change the look out of my office window, but I, I, I look forward to seeing development out there. I, I, I hope you can make it work in the market. That's, honestly, my only concern is it's that 35 just isn't developing yet. So, I, I wish you the best of luck, and, you know, I, I could make comments on transparency and some other things, but I'm not going to get your hopes up. But know that I will be looking at your back buildings on, on a daily basis, and I won't be able to see Third Coast quite as clearly as I can now.
Well, thank you, Mayor. One, one thing that I think is interesting is, as soon as Tony, or Councilmember Carbone said, I know that staff has been, and Mr. Orr, I'm talking to you about this, I know that staff has been giving you hell, or whatever he said, you looked directly at Matt Buchanan, so I thought it was pretty interesting, pretty funny. Didn't look at anybody else other than Matt. But, no, so I, I, I had, thank you for, Councilmember Perez pulled this map up, I was, I was interested in the proximity to the silo, and I appreciate you developing in Pearland and looking to make this area better. I think it looks great. There's some development just to the north of, of that with Valensons, that I'm, no doubt you know about that, just going behind Wendy's, the, however it's pronounced, the beer joint, or not joint, but the beer brewery.
The brewery.
How is it, Valensons?
Valensons.
Valensons. So, the brewery, and I think that, knowing that there might be some potential for some more entertainment around there is, is promising, and this is promising as well, just to clean it all up, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I think to the disappointment of Councilmember Carbone, who loves to hear me speak, Method Architecture is a, is a client of mine, even though they are not the presenter, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment on this, so I'm going to recuse myself from any votes associated with this project.
Okay. Chairman, do you have any comments on this, Planning Commission?
Anything.
No comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Staff having a wrap-up comments at this point? Okay. Item three on the agenda says I can adjourn this, over carry, at 8:39. At this time, what we'll do is I will return to the original agenda, council agenda, and move to, let me see if I can get my agenda here. Moving to item number eight, uh, seven, uh, are there, does council have any council or mayor issues for future council agendas? Any of y'all have any future council agenda items you'd like to have based on? Okay. And, uh, moving then to executive session under Texas Government Code, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, for consultation with the city attorney regarding Texas Commission on Environmental Quality-related Issues. Obviously, in executive session, we can discuss these items with our staff and, uh, and any senior technical person that we might invite into there. But we cannot make a decision in executive session. So, any decision that we make must be brought back to open session for handling. So, at this point, we will recess into executive session at, uh, my clock says eight forty. Council has returned from executive session at ten oh four PM. In executive session, we, I'll ask Councilmember Moore, share his idea.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a, a motion that, uh, we do a resolution petitioning TCQ Executive Director to immediately suspend Blue Ridge landfill permit fifteen oh five A. So-
Second.
Motion, we have, a motion is our second? I heard, I think I heard section. Okay. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none. We do have motion second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Aye.
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 Okay. The executive, council is excu- we are, I will be terminating the council meeting and the executive session at ten-